Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to declare the Liverpool City Council meeting for the twenty eighth of June two thousand and three, two thousand and twenty-three officially open. Um. I'd like to remind everyone that in accordance with council's code of meeting practice, other than the public forum section, this meeting is being livestreamed. To start today's proceedings, I'd like to invite Reverend David Clark from the Hoxton Park Anglican Church to read a prayer for the prayer of council and affirmation, as well as an acknowledgement of country. Could I invite everyone to please stand, and they'll be followed by the National Anthem?
Before we begin proceedings, we'd like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and their ancestors, past and present. The Cabragall Clan of the Dharuk Nation, I also acknowledge that this land was accessed by peoples of the Dharawal and Dharuk nations. We affirm our hope and dedication to the good governance government of our city and the wellbeing of all of Liverpool's residents, no matter their race or creed. Today, we affirm our hope for sound decision-making by council, which will improve the quality of life in our city. We express our expectations and best wishes for Australia, our nation's future, the mayor, councillors and staff of council, and all those associated with good government in Liverpool. Father God, at this time, when many people in our local community are under financial strain and feeling the pressure of rising costs of living and interest rates, we thank you for those working hard in this community seeking to assist, like the community cafe in Sadlera, the Anglicare Mobile Food Pantries and others, and pray that you'll bless them and with volunteers and resources they need to continue this work. As we hear war and conflict in other parts of the world, we thank you for the peace we experience in Australia. We pray that this will continue. We pray that our diverse community will be united in seeking the common good, the progress and advancement of our region, and the care and protection of our children and vulnerable people. We pray for safety of the workers on council projects like Civic Place, and pray for your protection over them and wisdom for those who oversee this project. And we commit now to you, today's meeting, that you'll guide and assist all involved with a desire to serve others well, to support our local community, and to do all with integrity and justice. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. Thank you, Reverend Clark, for your your kind prayers for all of us here and as well in the Liverpool community. And can I also take this opportunity to wish all those who are celebrating today a Aiden Mubarak. We have some councillors who are attending remotely. Councillor Hagerty, councillor Caliander, councillor Carneeb and councillor Goodman. Do we have any other, any apologies? Apologies. We'll move on to condolences. We have one condolence motion today. For Miss Auntie Maggie Neil. Today, we pause to honour the memory of Auntie Maggie Neil, who passed away last Monday, the Saturday eighth of April, who passed away last month, sorry, Saturday the eighth of April two thousand and twenty-three, after a period of ill health. Auntie Maggie was a longtime resident of Liverpool, having lived in Larnia for many years. Auntie Maggie was a well-known and respected elder in the local First Nations community. She was a longstanding member of the Gendingara Local Aboriginal Land Council and was a regular fixture at events and members' meetings. Auntie Maggie was a strong advocate for the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander community, both through her involvement with the Land Council and her role on the Liverpool City Council Aboriginal Consultative Committee. She was passionate about using this platform to support improved outcomes for all local First Nations people. Auntie Maggie also had a long career as a nurse and was enrolled in the SCS for many years. Maggie was a wonderful woman who loved her community and was very dedicated to working with the Land Council and the Aboriginal Consultative Committee. Her vibrant personality and cheeky sense of humour endeared her to many. She will be sorely missed by the Land Council, our local First Nations community and all of us here at council. I humbly express my deepest condolences to Auntie Maggie's family and friends and our thoughts and prayers to our loved ones during this difficult time. May she rest in peace. Councillor Rhodes?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr Mayor. Yes, Maggie Neil was a friend of mine, who I've known for many decades, long before I became a councillor. And it's true, Maggie had an enthusiasm for life. She was always the first to put her hand up to help and the last to leave on the many, many occasions when she was there, just simply to do that, help. Her enthusiasm for life was most evident in the way she befriended anyone she met. I loved the way Maggie would start conversations with complete strangers, and in fifteen minutes you would swear to God that she had known, they had known each other for all their lives. I recall the occasions she would visit my own home when I was looking after my father in his final years, and her cheerful disposition. She would call my father Dad, which always brought a smile to my dad's face. He really enjoyed Maggie's visits. Maggie did have a colourful life. She told stories about her experience as a young Aboriginal child and wrote poems about her experience that were stories from her heart. I published the book of poems for her somewhere way back in the nineteen nineties as a gift of thanks for her and her friendship. She did tell me many occasions about her adventures as a nurse and also that she was in the army. Until she got sick, she was diagnosed with cancer. She volunteered with the SES and always attended council's Aboriginal Consultative Committees, meetings, and helped out at NADOC stalls. Maggie was a loyal and devoted friend to many people, but two people in particular I'd like to mention is Brew and Sammy, because they stood by Maggie throughout her ordeal with cancer, and I thank them personally for both being there for Maggie when she needed them most. Brew was with Maggie when she was taken to hospital and in what ended up being her final hours. And when I met up with Brew and Sammy at Maggie's favourite cafe in Kasula to remember our friend, and as her passing was so sudden, Brew told me the events at the hospital. Maggie was talkative, as she is normally. She was hungry, and she asked for a chicken sandwich. Brew's parents rang, inquiring about Maggie's wellbeing. Maggie took the phone, in normal Maggie style, and invited herself, in true Maggie bravado, to their place next week for dinner, where she was welcomed and promised her favourite meal. Then Maggie fell asleep, with her hand curled within the comfort of Brew's hand, and Maggie quietly passed away into the night. Maggie was a proud Aboriginal woman. Maggie Neil was a friend of mine. May she rest in peace.
Thank you, Councillor Rhodes. I'll move the condolence motion, all those in favour, against, declare it carried. Can I request one, a minute more of silence, please? Thank you, everybody. Well, I'll have the confirmation of minutes for the previous meeting.
Move it.
Councillor Green, second and deputy mayor. Any discussion? All those in favour? Against? I declare it carried. Are there any declarations of interest? No.
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, councillor Caliander.
Um. I would like to declare a non-procenary but significant interest in com zero one, the Grants, Donations and Community Sponsorship Report. Several of the recommended recipients of the grants are known to me through my community activities. I will leave the room for that, for the virtual room.
Thank you. Any other further declarations? The Liverpool Innovation Precinct is more than just a physical precinct of our city centre. It is a catalyst for economic growth and social transformation. It is where businesses focused on medical, health and research fields come together, centred around the Liverpool Hospital Precinct, to push boundaries, break barriers and revolutionise industries collectively. Within the precinct, we are cultivating an ecosystem that nurtures innovation, supports startups and attracts industry leaders. On the eighth of June, Liverpool Innovation Precinct Partnership hosted a launch for its investment prospectus at the Western Sydney University Liverpool campus. The prospectus, as the name suggests, aims to attract investment into the precinct and into Liverpool, and was launched by the New South Wales Treasurer, the Honourable Danny Mooki, MLC. The event also included a panel session of three representative companies who are invested in the precinct. Local state members of parliament, Mr Nathan Hagerty MP, Ms Krishma Caliander MP and Ms Tina Ayad MP, shared their vision for Liverpool. I also acknowledge councillors and senior staff who attended the launch. I particularly would like to acknowledge the exceptional work of two individuals who played pivotal roles in the formation and development of this groundbreaking initiative, Lance Chia and David Borger. Lance hails from Liverpool as a former school captain at Liverpool Boys High and had the foresight and determination to champion the concept of Liverpool Innovation Precinct, understanding the potential to transform our city's future. Lance's unwavering commitment to this to this vision has been instrumental in shaping the direction of the lip. David Borger is well known to council as a respective advocate for urban development and strategic planning for Western Sydney and provided invaluable guidance and expertise throughout the formation of the Liverpool Innovation Precinct. I propose that council staff prepare a report into the Liverpool Innovation Precinct area, identifying land use changes through planning and place-making opportunities to assist the further growth and development of the precinct and to attract more business investment and the best minds and dedicated workers to come to Liverpool. The report should consider the advocacy of infrastructure in place to attract businesses to the area and many regulatory reforms that might further support the business environment, any marketing or branding support council can offer further, and place-making initiatives to enhance the public spaces, transport links, and creating more vibrancy for the precinct to ensure it is a unique and pleasant urban environment to work and relax. I'm just going to go back to the report should consider. The report should consider the advocacy of infrastructure in place to attract businesses to the area and any regulatory reforms that might further support the business environment, any marketing or branding support council can offer, place-making initiatives to enhance and support the public spaces, transport links and creating more vibrancy for the precinct to ensure it is a unique and pleasant urban environment to work and relax. And the recommendation is that council commend Lance Chia and David Borger for the success of Liverpool Innovation Precinct and in particular, successful development and launch of the investment prospectus. Two, council prepares a report to support the development of Liverpool Innovation Precinct that includes land use reforms and place-making opportunities to embark to the council meeting in the first quarter of two thousand and twenty-four. That being said, I'll put the motion. Is there any discussion? Put the motion, all those in favour? Against? I declare it unanimous. The next mayoral minute is regarding Aquatopia passes for year six graduates in Liverpool LGA. Finishing primary school is a remarkable accomplishment in the lives of our students. It signifies the end of their early education, a period of growth, learning and personal development. As a community, it is our duty to recognise and celebrate this important moment in their lives. As mayor, I propose the allocation of funds to provide discounted Aquatopia passes for all year six students graduating in Liverpool LGA in the twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-four, twenty-five periods. With the cost of living pressures, this gesture will again allow our young residents to have an unforgettable experience and celebrate the significant milestone of finishing primary schooling. It will also commemorate the achievements of our young students as they transition into secondary education. By providing discounted passes to year six students, we will not only celebrate their accomplishments, but also provide an opportunity for them to relax, rejuvenate and create lasting memories with their friends and families. The proposed funding for this initiative in two thousand and twenty-three is approximately eighty thousand dollars. This would allow us to negotiate discounted rates with Fairfield Council for a specified number of Aquatopia passes. I believe this is crucial to make the opportunity available to all year six graduates again, ensuring inclusivity and equal access like we did last year. The benefits of this initiative extend beyond providing recreational opportunities for our youth. It will provide, promote physical wellbeing and current social engagement and strengthen community ties among graduating students. It is important that we acknowledge the hard work, dedication and growth exhibited by our year six students. They embraced the challenges, acquired new skills and formed lasting friendships during their primary schooling years. This initiative is a way to express our pride in the achievements, acknowledge their commitment to education. I propose that the distribution of the passes be coordinated through the respective schools in Liverpool LGA as a civic function. This will ensure efficient administration, equal distribution to all year six graduates. And I would like to move that council approves the purchase of discounted Aquatopia passes for all year six students in Liverpool LGA who will be graduating in twenty-three and twenty-four, approves the reallocation of eighty thousand dollars from the surplus two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three full year grant, financial year grants, donation sponsorship's budget to purchase the discounted passes for all year students who will be graduating in twenty-three and twenty-four, and three, coordinate distribution of the passes to all primary schools in Liverpool LGA. That being said, I'd like to put the motion. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mayor.
Can you put your, um, try to speak up, or can we put the volume up, please, so we can hear councillor Caliander better?
Uh, the volume should be up, is that? Is that not, am I not coming through? Hello?
We have.
I can hear.
Yeah, it's just very faint, just.
Okay, so hopefully you can hear me. Um, I have a question about, um, why we would be allocating eighty thousand dollars from our budget to, um, to, to pay for passes um, for a facility located in another local government area. Um, we obviously have recreational facilities and, um, and according to facilities in our own LGA, um, why was that not considered?
Yeah, look, it's a, uh, I think it's a pretty, uh, good question and simple to answer. Ultimately, we don't have, we don't have a facility like Aquatopia. We have a Whitlam Centre that's at capacity. Um, we have a Wenden Centre that hasn't had any money invested in it in fifty-plus years. Um, and, you know, we, um, our Fairfield Council made that investment as a regional facility and we should be supporting each other as a regional facility. I know. And councillor Moon, did you want to say something?
Yes, I'd like to just add to that. Um, we actually went out on a, on a tour of, um, Michael Wenden Centre, and we desperately need that to be upgraded. Um, that needs to change and we need to have that upgraded because our community deserves a better area for recreation, for swimming. That particular facility has not had an upgrade for fifty years since it was built. And for children to walk out of the indoor swimming pool, to go to the change rooms, they actually got to walk out in the rain and the cold. So if we can sort of, um, speak to Tina and Lena to see a way that we can speed up the process of getting that looked at. Thank you.
Councillor Hagerty?
Yeah, um, if I got my dates right, I think the, uh, the Billabong down in Campbelltown will be opening in September, and that's free. I can't, we encourage, uh, if we're going to encourage people to regional aquatic facilities, we should send them down to the, the brand new wonderful multi-million dollar Billabong in Campbelltown. That would save us quite a bit of ratepayers' funds.
So you're speaking against the motion?
I am.
Councillor McNaught?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, I'd like to.
My question hasn't been answered. So why haven't we considered, uh, sending them down to the Billabong? Working with Campbelltown Council and going to the Billabong down there?
I, I personally, um, when, when it's built, we'll, um, I don't see, I don't, it's not finished yet, so we look forward to seeing it being finished. I know it's a over budget and long delayed project, but once again, it's a different, it's a different facility. I think they do different things.
It's got water and it's free entry. The, the previous mayor committed to ensuring it was free, and I've spoke to the mayor recently, and he's reaffirmed that commitment. It will be a free entry to everyone. So if we're in, uh, we're in a tight budget situation, here's, here's some, here's an opportunity for us to support our, our neighbours and also save ratepayers a significant sum of money.
Councillor, uh, McNaught?
Thank you.
I'll just ignore it then.
Well, councillor, you're entitled to move an alternate motion if you like. You feel free to, uh, do it, you know, if you're directing your question at whoever. Um, I can answer it in a, if you want, in a particular way. Our community wants us to build facilities. They want better facilities. The Whitlam Centre is aging. Uh, I haven't seen anything of significant going to the Whitlam Centre to improve it in many, many, many years. Um, it's been, dare I say, neglected. Uh, the Wenden Centre has been neglected. At the first council meeting, as part of a, which a plan that we took to the community and was democratically voted upon, was all building new facilities for our families, for everybody in our community. Building a new swimming pool in Moorbank, building a new swimming at Khan's Hill. Um, and there'll be a motion about that later on. My view is rather than borrow two hundred million dollars, they don't count, the community doesn't want us to borrow two hundred million dollars to build a new council building for ourselves. They would rather community facilities. Had the previous council built, uh, used that money to build those facilities, we wouldn't have to have motions like this. And hopefully when Khan's Hill is built, we won't need this motion. When Moorbank is built, we won't need motions like this. Councillor McNaught?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. That was, um, pretty much what I was going to say. Um, I'm, I'm happy to support this motion. Um, grants and donations and community sponsorship is to go back to our community, to benefit our community. These year six children are graduating from our LGA. I'd like to be in that position. I'm pleased we're in that position to reward them for this achievement. Um, and let this spur us on to get our Moorbank and our Khan's Hill precincts delivered so that, you know, after the next few years, we may not need to, um, use regional facilities. Thank you.
Councillor Caliander?
Yeah, two things, Mayor. One, I'd like to fact-check you on, uh, the comments about Michael Wenden. I absolutely agree that Michael Wenden, um, it deserves a much-needed upgrade. It is almost at the end of its lifespan, if not already at the end of its lifespan. Um, but there was, uh, the opening of the Splash Play area, um, which occurred, I believe, in the previous, previous term of council. So just fact-checking you on the fact, on, uh, on the assertion that there was nothing that was done to, um, improve facilities on Michael Wenden. Um, but like I said, not disagreeing that it is at the end, at the end of its lifespan and requires upgrading. Um, on that note, I would like to move an amendment or move a foreshadowed motion um, to, um, to the mayoral minute that you've proposed here, that we allocate the eighty thousand dollars from surplus grants, uh, into upgrades for Michael Wenden.
Uh, and what do you expect to achieve with the eighty thousand dollars? First, do you have, do you have a secondor?
Believe us, it's hands, right?
I'll second that.
Second, councillor Hagerty?
So that we allocate eighty thousand dollars and we receive a briefing or we receive information about what, uh, what kind of upgrades that, uh, could that could go towards, so that we can, uh.
Yeah, no worries. Can I just ask, can I ask through the CEO? And I'll, sorry, get to you in a moment, councillor Green, sorry. Uh, he, I know we built, in the last term, there was a, we built a big, well, the big park, Splash Park. We built the one in Middleton Grange. Uh, can I ask roughly what the investment for those facilities were, if you know, roughly?
Thank you.
Well, they, million, million dollars plus, million dollars, easily. I think it was, uh, yeah, definitely over a million dollars. So I think eighty thousand dollars might pay for some of the consultants' reports to do a study into what that is, which I know that, um, we've already resolved, we've already resolved to look at Michael Wenden Centre. Um, and we're, I know that that is actually progressing. So I think we already have money to look at what ADK can do. Councillor Green?
Uh, yes, I have a question. Um, in terms of the eighty thousand coming out of the grants, donations and community sponsorship, I'm just aware that, that we already, we are receiving, uh, more applications into that, uh, particular pot of money. And I'm just concerned if there's that money is taken out of there, then, you know, where it's like a, you know, robbing Peter to pay Paul kind of scenario.
Very, very valid, councillor, especially councillor Green, but we have, I think there's a good answer for that.
I'll, I'll ask the director, because it has to do with the financial year. Uh, the director, Tina.
Uh, thank you. Through the CEO, um, this is based on a financial year, so this is the surplus remaining from this financial year. So this is the last, um, council meeting before we end the financial year. This eighty thousand surplus is consistent to what we've done before with council surplus funds in the grant space. Um, previously, we've done that to fund, uh, the BMX track and the like, so it's quite consistent in what we've done with surplus funds.
Yep. Yeah, so I think, uh, councillor Rhodes?
Uh, just one question. Uh, do we have to allocate the eighty thousand before the end of this financial year? If it's going to be spent in this financial year? We do?
Yes.
Um, look, I, uh, can see the concerns of the, uh, of the, um, the other councillors and, uh, you know, I think that they're, they're genuine concerns. Look, I wonder if we could put in a point four that, um, could perhaps, uh, recommend that, um, council endeavours to find a facility within the Liverpool LGA uh, for the next financial year, should there be a surplus in the, uh, in the grants programmes?
No, it works. Yeah, so when you say next financial year, I think probably considering we're about to start one in a couple of days.
Yep.
You mean the twenty-four, twenty-five?
By the end of the next financial year, if we have a surplus in our grants programme. I, I think that we should be looking for, uh, that money, if possible, if we can get something up for it to be distributed at a facility in the Liverpool LGA, which would, uh, address to some degree the concerns of the other councillors.
Happy to incorporate that as part of, um, the, the motion. Councillor Caliander?
Yeah, ju- just, um, flowing on from that, that fantastic point by councillor Rhodes, um, my understanding is that this, uh, this is the second year that this will, uh, will be done in terms of, um, council funding, uh, passes to Aquatopia. Um, why have we not looked at a local way of, um, spending our ratepayers' money rather than, you know, offloading it through to a neighbouring LGA? And, and, you know, I understand the, the, the regional benefits, um, but, you know, these are ratepayers' money of, uh, you know, people that have, um, you know, homes and paid rates in our area. This should be going to support local facilities. This should be going to support ensuring that our local kids can enjoy local facilities.
Mr Mayor, a councillor, we did look at it. Uh, the team looked at it extensively. We just don't have the facility as yet. I mean, it's one of the main reasons there is such a push to build the new facilities so we can do that. But we just don't have the facility. Uh, and again, it is residents' money, absolutely, but the money is being used for resident students in Liverpool. It's not being used for students outside of Liverpool.
I, I understand that, and yet for the second year running, um, I've. I understand that. And yet for the second year running, I believe this would make it, what, $150,000 or $160,000 odd thousand that we have pretty much sent over to Fairfield to upgrade, to improve, to, you know, help support their facilities at the expense of doing anything with our local facilities. So, you know, where are the proposals for upgrades to parks, for example? Where is the Miller Master Plan at? Why have none of these things come before council? If, you know, if we're running around going, we don't have local facilities that we can send our children to?
It's very simple. There are not equivalent facilities anywhere within our LGA.
Yes, like I said, I understand that point. However, you know, why have these proposals not come before council over the last, you know, six, eight months as we have come to realise this?
I think these proposals have come to council for the last many years. There are numerous master plans, Khan's Hill's master plan, which the staff have worked on tirelessly over the years. There's Woodward Park master plans that talks about upgraded recreational facilities. I don't know how many other master plans am I missing? Moorbank had one once upon a time as well. So it's black and white when you walk outside in the streets and you see our facilities are being run down, you know, and we're doing something about this. And I'm glad that this budget now that we're doing and the reports that are in this agenda are doing something about that. I know councillor Moon is very dead and councillor Goodman are very dedicated to ensuring Wenden gets upgraded. You know, that's our priorities, you know, getting that done. So, yeah. I'd say councillor Moon, did you want to say something?
Yes, Mr Mayor.
In terms of getting my question addressed, there is a process between the master planning occurring and construction and, you know, those facilities being upgraded. As you rightly identified, we have a number of master plans in play. And yet, for example, when it came to getting the Miller Master Plan funded, so we could actually see some, you know, some realisation of some of those upgrades and some of those facilities for that community, those opportunities aren't being taken. Why?
With all due respect, councillor Caliander, you've been on council for the past five years. And this is number six, I think, or even a little bit more. You understand exactly what's happening in the area. You've been here, you've seen the issues that we've got with those facilities. We've gone out and spent $200 million on Civic Place and we didn't accommodate for our community's needs through building these parks and those water facilities. And now that we're looking to help our community and give them something to do, okay? You're saying that now we should have been doing it in the area. It doesn't make sense because you know the issues that we've got in the area. You're our MP, so you understand. You should understand the needs and wants of our area.
And that's the substance of my question. There's a process between a master plan being in place and that master plan being realised. And the substance of my question is, why have we not taken steps to realise that master plan? Because there have been opportunities and we have not taken them.
All right, thank you. I'll take that. We'll take that on notice and last speaker and then we'll write a reply. Councillor Rhodes?
Yes, councillor. Look, I do understand your concerns and I think everybody would agree that it would be better for us to be distributing these opportunity for our students, which is sort of like a grant. Like, I looked at this and I thought, my God, I want an animal facility in Liverpool. Let's take this goddamn money and put it towards that. But then I thought, it's grants money. It should be going back into the community as a form of a grant to those students who have done well or have finished their higher school certificate. It seems more appropriate. I, more than anybody else, would love to grab that money for the animal shelter. But I think that this is, from the grants, it is a more appropriate redistribution of those excess funds.
Thank you. And I'll just finish up as a right of reply. I think councillor, thank you for everyone's comments on this. And once again, I always look forward to the diligence that councils can spend 20 minutes debating $80,000 that's within. Put this in perspective, it's within a budgeted amount of money. We have a budget of a few hundred thousand dollars a year for community grants. There's $80,000 that has not been spent, assuming that we approve the report in the agenda today. Using that money, allocating it for some of our most disadvantaged kids, the kids of 2168. And I went out there, when I went to Miller Public School and gave them their certificates, they were so excited. Their parents can't afford to go out there into these facilities. It's no different than active kids vouchers. It's giving kids, it's giving families an opportunity to take cost of living pressures off and getting them into sport, you know. You say, why was anything done about master plans? Well, I tell you what, when I was elected as mayor in 2012, we had a mall that was rundown, we had a big park that was full of very antisocial behaviour and stabbings. And we went out there and we said, let's do something about this. And we did something about this and we delivered on those things. You can see now with the work in the mall, the 300,000 people that went there at night time, enjoying the facilities from all over Sydney coming in and enjoying this, our families. We have our ice skating rink going in there now. We did something about it. The last term of council, its priority was to borrow more money than any council ever has to build a building for themselves, which I still don't understand how we could have spent that much money on such a facility. Now we're saying, whilst we're taking action on building facilities and improving our facilities, what our community wants by good financial management. In the meanwhile, we're going to say to our kids, you know what? Well done. Yeah, a pat on the back. Take the pressure off families, let them have a good day, let them enjoy for a tiny little bit amount of money. We don't live in the eastern suburbs. We don't have waterways all over here. Hopefully one day when the river is back open to the community, that we'll have that as well, which will be an amazing facility. And myself and the council, we're all committed to doing that and we'll make that happen. So I strongly recommend that, you know, if you support kids, if you support families, give them a pat on the back and let them enjoy this. That's within already budgeted amount. And that being said, I'll put the motion. All those in favour? Against? I declare the motion carried. I'll call a division. All those in favour?
Sorry, my camera's not working, but I'm standing up for the motion.
Thought we had a rule that you had to have your camera on.
Yep, as votes not counted. Against? Councillor Kurnee, are you up or down? For or against? You can stay seated, just tell us which way you're doing. Against? No, he's against. You against councillor Kurnee? Done. Declare the motion carried. We'll now move on to the agenda, item plan 01.
Sorry, Mayor, I have an issue. My foreshadowed motion was never put.
Yeah, the motion was passed. The foreshadow lapses.
Can, will the foreshadow be recorded in book in a minute?
Happy for it to be.
That will be noted as lapsed.
Moving on, we'll now move on to plan 01, Austral Progress Report, page 52, sorry, page 54, tab 1. I'd like to move a motion.
Happy to move with an amendment?
Actually, do you want to start councillor McNair?
Happy to move with an amendment.
Yeah, well, the recommendation is only receive a note the report.
I have a point two.
Yep.
So point one, that council receive a note the report. Point two, immediately commence the acquisition process of properties for the purpose of drainage and infrastructure.
Yeah, and can I add on to that? Can we get a report back at the next meeting of what council needs to do in order to speed up the process with acquisition? Whether it's resourcing, whatever it has to happen?
I have a question.
Councillor, just to amend it. So one is receive a note the report, two is immediately commence the acquisition and three is the report come back. You've got two ones. So you need to change it, one, two, three.
And councillor McNair, do we have to, can we just say for property acquisition rather than just drainage infrastructure? Because we've got drainage and roads and parks, so I think we can.
Yeah, that's fine.
So if we can remove drainage infrastructure and just keep it for the acquisition of properties?
Yeah, just delete everything that comes after properties.
Yep.
Thank you.
Can we also put in there that we work out how do we, how do I put this wording?
Mr Mayor, with my motion?
Yep, I'll get to you just in a moment councillor Green. There is Craig Park, one second. Bringing forward the delivery of Scott Memorial Park to this financial year? Next financial year.
Next financial year. I want you to want to do two days.
Plenty of time. 23, 24?
You can put 23, 24.
Yeah, 23, 24, right. No, no, point five, I think is what councillor Green, so meaning with schools, infrastructure, New South Wales.
This is a public education and reinvestment of land to construct public schools in Austral. I think the points are there. Which is basically to encourage school infrastructure in New South Wales, to work with council, to identify the land so that we know what land has been set aside for public schools and for public schools to be constructed that meet both the current and future needs of the population in that particular area. And I do want to acknowledge and thank planning staff for their context and background that they've provided as well.
Just in regards to point C. I've got objecting to any development on land set aside for the purpose of a zone public school site. I'm just concerned that, I know that El Faiso College has an application on land that is zoned for a public school. And, you know, we are now objecting to that. I don't know if we could remove that. And once again, my kids go to that school and I would have to declare an interest and walk out on that, if that's the case.
This is for future context, Mr Mayor?
It's just a current application and we're kind of saying that we're against that application if you were to. Yeah. I'm just saying. Do we need point C? Can we just?
Can I refer that to the director for planning, who, you know, I appreciate her support in developing this motion?
I'm going to walk out on that one just in case. Deputy Mayor. Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, but what we should do is delete the word public school at the end. Councillor, can I suggest, this may solve the problem. So if you say point C, in the absence of an agreed plan for new public schools to cater for anticipated population, objective development of land set aside for the purpose of a zoned public school site, unless that development is for the purpose of a school. If you delete, because where the problem will occur is if you've got a zone for a school, a private school has an application, that then prevents us from dealing with, and I'm sure that's not what your intention is.
No, no, I'm all for solving problems. So if that's the problem, I'm happy to solve that.
I think if we delete the term public school and just say school, zoned for a school site, unless that development is for the purpose of, won't work? Right. Yes, but what I'm saying is, no, no, the first, where you say zoned for a public school, I've got no problem with that. But what I'm saying is that if a new school is going to be delivered and it's a private school, it doesn't breach this. So you've got no problem with public school either way. Yep. So where Malik Fahad is coming on in their application is that zone? Yeah. 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 This is one of the issues of doing some of this on the run, unfortunately, that I don't want us to have a motion.
Mr Chair? Mr Chair?
Look councillor, my recommendation as the CEO is to simply allow it as you've got it in its entirety with the purpose of a, sorry, in the absence of a great plan for schools to cater for population there, the purpose of a zoned public school site. So you leave the public where it first appeared. Zoned public, unless that development is for the purpose of a school, full stop.
Or possibly just remove C altogether, which will resolve the whole issue anyway, to start with. Because if we put it in, what's going to happen later on, it's going to come back to us that we've got an issue with it. But if we take point C out totally, then you're avoiding that whole scenario coming across. It's up to you, but I'm just, that's the way I read it. So I might be.
Well councillor, as long as we leave it as, you know, it's zoning for a school. Well, if the government interested in this block of land, they can buy it and build the school or private institutions can buy it as well.
Yeah. I guess if we, the context of the motion and why it's there was in particular to the briefing that we received on Austral and the fact that where there's seeking to rezone public school land to dispose of it. And the problem is that there's the public schools. There's an obligation and it's important for public schools to be provided in areas. So that's where it comes from in terms of council supporting public education. That what we're wanting to do is to preserve, or at least to argue for, those allotments of land that have been purchased for public schools, then public schools should be built on that land.
So are you happy to leave it as is, isn't it? Okay, thank you very much. Councillor Hagerty?
Oh, we've got a new chair.
Yes, the mayor had to leave because of a possible conflict.
All right, very small there, I can't tell. Look, I'm happy to give a more extensive briefing on this, but just in my other capacity, I have secured about $180,000 in funding for parks in Austral. I've met with schools, infrastructure, I've met with the minister for education, minister for roads, department of transport, Sydney Water and of course the team here at council. And we're already getting through, already getting through some of these issues. But I just wanted to let everyone know that already within its first 100 days, this government is acting swiftly to arrest some of the problems out in Austral. But as I said, I will touch base with everyone and give them a briefing when and if necessary.
Okay, thanks. Councillor Rhodes?
Yes, if I may, I have another matter which is somewhat related to the amendments that are being made. On page 59, traffic conditions around schools. In the report, it acknowledges that we do have a problem with people drop off and pick up on our public roads. We're having constant arguments between the parents that are dropping off and picking up. We're having violence even erupting. And in the report, I acknowledge that, it says that they will have rangers on a roster to be able to attend the schools in times of drop off and pick up. But I know that this council has also acknowledged in other reports that we don't have enough rangers to cover all the schools in the LGA. And besides, that's a shameful cost shifting to a responsibility of council which costs us money. So I would like acknowledged in this as well that council is currently that this council is currently advocating for drop off, pick up and drop off zones to be included in the school sites. Not using our public roads as school drop off and pick up zones. Unless we take action along this line, it is not, not, doesn't have a future for council to keep trying to address these issues through having rangers rotation around the council sites. We don't have enough rangers. We can't employ enough rangers. Can we include in this an acknowledgement that council has? Can we include in this an acknowledgement that council has, I think, already written to the Department of Planning and other bodies, the state members, telling councils advocacy for drop off and pick off zones to be included in the school sites and not utilizing public roads for those purposes? Can we have that included in it?
Okay, thanks, thanks councillor. Mr CEO?
Yes, can I just check with the director of planning? Have you added the extra words in?
Through the CEO, yes, we have. So to address any potential issues with existing applications, we've clarified that we're objecting to any future development applications, so that would not include any current considerations that might be well advanced in the.
And then we've added back public schools. That works with the public, that actually works with the, I was concerned about current, not the future. So I've got that.
We're still addressing my issue, I hope.
And.
In her issues, regarding all the.
I'm just a little concerned, councillor, that that may be better as a completely separate motion, but we can always add.
No, I wanted to add it into this, you're talking about the schools and the Department of Education.
Jessica, you've got the exact wording that the councillor, we're just adding it so we can read it. Advocate an all-new. Yep. It's happening here, F. So we're adding it as a new F?
Facilities within the.
Just a minute councillor, let that finish first.
Can I help?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. It should be facilities within the development site.
Yeah, the word onsite covers that councillor. It's onsite.
To ensure the appropriate management of traffic, that would do it.
Yep, exactly. Yep. So the word onsite means it can't be on the public road, it has to be within the site, so covers all that you said, in one word.
Development site is the.
Done. Done.
Okay.
Excellent. All right. So you've got to put the motion.
Yeah, okay, just to work out.
Yes. All right, then we've done? Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So everyone happy with the motion now? Can I put the motion now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
It's moved by councillor Green, signed by councillor.
No, it was moved by councillor McNort and seconded by councillor Immune.
Thank you.
With a lot of input from everybody.
Okay.
So we put the motion.
So the motion moved by councillor McNort and seconded by councillor Green. Only if I say aye? Against, I declare the motion carried, thank you. Plan zero-two.
Can we note that as being unanimous, please?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
It's unanimous.
Unanimous, yeah.
It's unanimous unless otherwise noted. We need to bring the mayor back.
Thank you, everyone. We'll now move to our plan zero-two, page sixty-seven, tab two with the recommendation.
Yeah, move that one.
Seconded.
Move councillor Hadeed, seconded councillor Harrell, any discussion? Put the motion, all those in favour? Against? Declare it carried? Anyone there against, just to have it recorded? Okay. Lovely. Now we'll move on to com-zero-one, page seventy-eight, tab three, move deputy mayor, seconded councillor Harrell, any discussion?
I have.
Sorry, councillor Caliander, you declared an interest, do you want to walk out on this one? Just give councillor Caliander a moment, please.
I'll declare an interest on this one, I've just noticed, yeah, I received a free ticket to the Zest Awards, so I'll declare a conflict of interest.
Yeah.
Non-significant, non-vocary.
No worries, if you just make sure the form is filled out, please. All right. Are you staying in or just getting out? He's gone? Lovely. All right.
Question, Mr Mayor. I just wanted to point out, and it marries nicely with the discussion that we were having before, some of these, while I support all of these grant applications, some of them are to external people outside of the LGA, namely the Canterbury-Bankstown Chamber of Commerce caught my eye. And I guess I'm just after some reassurance from the staff that these programs that are delivered are for the benefit of our community in our community, similar to the way that we, that Meryl Minnit read, that that benefit is for our community even though these issues and facilities are sometimes outside the LGA. So in a long-winded way, I think I just want some reassurance that even though the providers may sit outside our LGA, that the benefit is for our LGA.
Yes, look, the director, Ternabana, will confirm that it is for the Liverpool Public Schools, but the director can give further reasons as to why the Liverpool Chamber of Commerce is not doing this.
Thank you, through the CEO, this is quite consistent, council funds organizations outside of the LGA as long as the program or the project's been delivered within the LGA. With that particular one, the program's been delivered at Liverpool Public School, Liverpool Public School, yes. And we, so that's quite consistent, and there is a number of others in the grants policy that does that, it's in the policy, it outlines it quite heavily. In terms of our own chamber, we are working with them on a number of project initiatives, they just haven't got capacity at the moment to do that, but we are in constant contact with the Liverpool Chamber of Commerce because also we want to fund their different projects. Thank you.
Fantastic, thank you. And I guess the Zest Awards are another good example of something that we've continually supported, that support our community, but to deliver it outside our LGA as well. Thank you.
I do have a suggestion about that, but I'll leave it to the policy item on the agenda, but I also would like confirmation from council that, that the, I understand there was a misunderstanding about one of the grants received and that is going to be reconsidered by council. My question is that that will be reconsidered and if council believes that it should be endorsed or put up as a possible approval for council, that it will be taken out of the financial figures for the 2023-24 budget, not the budget that we're seeing here, which is the leftover, is that right?
Yeah, thank you councillor, through the CEO.
Mr Mayor, can we add to the motion some things?
Yeah, just one moment, deputy mayor, while the director was about to answer.
My apologies councillor, so through the CEO, yes, I understand the application you're referring to and we are seeking, we sought further information and getting that application reassessed, that will come to council in July and the money will come through that particular financial year.
Wonderful, thank you, deputy mayor. Can you put your microphone on, please?
Can we, can we add, like, we do a check presentation to this recipient?
Yep, no worries, is the secondor happy with that? Councillor Harrell? Yep, done, added, lovely. I'll put the motion, all those in favour? Against, I declare carried. Councillor Hagerty and Caliander, someone pleased, I don't know, they can come back?
Thank you, councillor Caliander has rushed down to the house to give a speech, so we might be without her for a couple of minutes.
Lovely, okay. Com-zero-two, page ninety-nine. Move deputy mayor, seconded councillor Harrell, any discussion?
Yes, there is, I have some questions about this. We're on com-o-two.
Children's Parliament.
Page ninety-nine.
My questions are, does the 2023 budget allocate funding for the children's parliament in its current operating form? Not talking about the expansion, so it is covered, it can continue on as is.
Yes, thank you councillor.
My next question, if I may, on page 104, the report states that existing state and federal government programs no longer fund new programs. Is this a new program for the expansion or is it just a, a readaption or a expansion of the existing program? And would that make it possible for future funding?
The director.
Thank you, through the CEO, we have wrote to seek funding, it is an expansion of the existing program and you're correcting your assumption there.
So it is possible that we will get future funding for it?
That's correct.
And the other one that is on page 104 to 105, the external grants are generally targeted at short-term, one-off programs and do not offer recurrent funding, and that we have written to the Department of Social Services and are waiting for a response. So can you explain further that generally they only do short-term funding and is that going to impact us seriously in our possibilities of having the program expanded?
So through the CEO, we often get, we have to get extension and approval for further funding for the existing program, we have had that, and now we're looking at expanding that program. It is a one of a kind and is quite successful, so we've got our fingers crossed that we will get that additional funding. We just wrote that, that's a generic, generically, they tend to fund programs, but on this occasion, we've had it extended numerous times throughout the year because of success and its benefit to the community.
Right, on that basis, I think you've answered all my.
Great, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, I declare it carried. Next, I want us com-zero-three, the report back, the report back on amendment of the grants, donations, sponsorship policy, page 108, tab five, recommendation 108, councillor McNort, you have a motion?
I do, I'd like to add an additional point to the motion and it's a little bit messy, I'm sorry. So what I'd like to do, I'll give you my, I guess.
So you're moving the motion with an additional point?
I'm moving the motion with an additional point.
Yep.
And I'm happy to second the motion with my question being answered.
Yep, okay.
My point is that we add a further category to the grants overview, category number 10 that would be, which would be a community health, education and arts category. And we allocate up to $10,000 for that category.
So community, health, and arts.
Yes, community, health, education and arts.
Yep, great.
And I have a further addition, which I'm happy to speak to these in a moment, under section 7.9.2, it relates to sporting donations. And it would be that we, I guess, we look at or rework those available funds in 7.9.2 to be a little bit less prescriptive and broader, but allow a little bit, maybe up to $1,000 for those sporting grants to individuals. And I apologize, I know it's messy, I'm not sure how we word it well.
Well, I think saying that, like, let's, let's make that a bit more, there's so many different categories in that area and the numbers are very small and they haven't really grown, doesn't really cover the costs for anyone. Say, relooking at it and with the aim of increasing the amount?
Absolutely, yeah, so less, less, less prescriptive, but increasing the amount per application that would be available.
Yep. So do you want the 1K in there or just leave it open for them, the staff to come back to us?
I'm happy, I'm happy for staff to come back with a recommendation.
Yep, so just remove the 1K, thank you. Okay, good. Secondor happy with that?
Yes, I'm happy with that.
Your questions?
Yes, my question relates back to the, the people that are applying for grants that are outside our Liverpool area. And I understand and agree with it perfectly because they are, the grant funding is to run things within our Liverpool LGA, of which our constituents are going to benefit. However, in the consideration of the grants, is there any loading for organizations applying for grants who also have their offices of operation in the Liverpool LGA?
Thank you, through the CEO, currently there is no additional need. We have a merit-based approach with the criteria, as long as the program is run in Liverpool and it benefits our local community, that's based, there's a number of other criterias, but to answer that particular question, that's not an additional weighting in favour.
Well, I understand that and thank you. I wonder if council would consider adding a, some form of point system that would encourage people to, if they are outside our area, we'd love them to come to Liverpool and operate here, it might mean that they might open an office up in Liverpool. I think it's extremely important to us because of the economic circumstances that we find ourselves in.
Yep.
And if we can encourage those other organizations to open up a office in the Liverpool LGA, albeit a cup of coffee that we're sending to, selling to them during their meetings or whatever, it would assist our local economy. And so therefore, if it is okay with councillor McNort?
Yep, great, is councillor McNort happy with that?
I'm happy for some information to come back on how that would work.
Yeah, to come back to us, how that would work. Councillor Rhodes?
Yes.
Yes.
May I, councillor, can I, rather than what you're saying, yeah, change that for the council officers to examine a point system to encourage organizations, to advantage organization within the Liverpool City Council.
To encourage.
I'd be happier with that if we're encouraging our own LGA providers.
I think it's a bit awkward to say we're going to bring people from outside to come into Liverpool, what I'd rather we said was that we're going to encourage businesses within Liverpool, they'll get an advantage with a point system. That in effect tells everyone outside, come into the system, to get the point system. We're going to favor those within the council area.
So what we're, what you're asking for is a review of the weighting system.
It does the same thing, but it's more positive about our businesses here.
Yeah.
Mr Mayor?
Can I ask that while we, are we still going to go out on 28 days exhibition with this as is now or shall we wait until we get this report back potentially next month and then go out at the same time?
No, no, you could, Mr Mayor, through you, you can definitely pass this motion because all this motion is asking in item seven is that we go and examine and come back to you, but the rest of the motion can still pass.
Yep, all right, all good. Let's move to the motion, we put all those in favour? Against, declare it carried? Great. Com-zero-four, proposed redesign of district forums, page 135, tab six, recommendation 136, I'll defer it.
I have a motion. I have a foreshadowed motion too, sorry. Well, I said I have a motion.
Motion, yep. I'll move that, we defer it.
Yes, what I would, my motion, if I may, I'll put my motion and you work out what to do it?
No. Yeah, go for it, let me just move, I move deferral, I have a second or council, I'm going to defer it.
Okay, my motion would be that we receive and note this report and that's number one. Number two, council values the opinions and information provided by our constituents through the current delivery of the district forums. And number three, defer and continue the district forums in the same current format of delivery as they currently exist until this matter is resolved by council.
Yeah, I think the last bit I've been advised is, is a bit inconsistent about.
What's inconsistent?
About the fact that you're deferring the motion.
Yeah, receive and note this report, I'll put it first. Defer this matter. One, continue the district forums as they, in the same format of delivery as they currently exist until this matter is resolved by council. It's got to come back to council.
Yep, sorry, yep.
Okay, and, uh, the final one, that council values the opinions and information provided by our constituents through the current delivery of the district forums.
Yep, great. Um. I'm happy to adopt that because it's deferring but just making points. So I'm happy to adopt that.
Well, I'm happy to second it. Look, along the same lines.
Yep.
But I think we need to fix something here. There are issues with the forums and obviously the report states that we have had a drop-off in the number of people that attend that. Just continuing with the forums is not going to solve that. What I think we, and, and I had intended, let the forums go, in particular, there are three forums that do have good attendances. But one of the issues is that council, I believe, is not, uh, and I don't want to make this sound the wrong way, we're not doing enough to encourage people to come. To give you an example, we had that community forum about the budget.
Mm-hmm.
That attracted around about thirty people.
Mm-hmm.
But what it did, at the end of it, there were Q and A's. What were those Q and A's about? The very things that in this report you're saying should go to, uh, the, um, customer service centre. And that doesn't happen. Why don't those people do that? And the reason is they probably don't get the time to do it. So I think what we need to do, we need to make sure that our, that our, the, uh, the, our staff that do, send the information to people in the community, it needs to be more informative. It needs to have agendas with a better outline of what happens. The point is, we need to be able to attract people to come to those. And to make them attractive, you've got to put the information there that they seek. And, you know, in the rural forum, which is probably one of the most, sorry, I'm at, I'm making a play for this. But, but, you know, we, we, the rural forum is probably one of the most popular ones. And it's popular because people come there and sadly they come for the same issues. Why do they come for the same issues? Because we don't really address them. So we need to look at that. You know, we've got illegal dumping, toxic waste, uh, potholes, all those issues. And they come up time and time again. They're probably not doing a good enough job in addressing those. So if you put that information out there when you send emails, you'll attract those people as you did with the budget thing that was quite popular.
Yep, thank you, councillor Green.
So we can put that into the first?
Just one second, councillor Green.
Could, could I suggest that as part of the deferment, that we also have a review of how the, the forums are promoted? Um, that that seems to be a bit of a missing link or a problem in terms of promotion, who comes? Well, who gets information and who doesn't?
So can, can I just summarise that ultimately that we all acknowledge it needs to be a bit of a reform? We get that, they're needed, but they need to be improved, there's going to be different ways. So can I recommend that we, we just, we defer this? In the meanwhile, before the next council meeting, we all get together and have a discussion about this and see what we want to achieve out of it, take all this into consideration. Um, the new director of customer services starting on Monday, um, I think we'll be the only council that actually has that. It'd be very good, I think, to get her involved in this conversation. She's a local resident as well. Um, so, and see what value can add on to that and we can work it out there because I think we can spend a long time on this, so.
So if we just include in point two, to make sure that we've all perfectly understood that, defer this item until reviewed?
We are going to do that.
Yep.
Yeah.
We're going to have a discussion of it together?
Yes. Defer this item until reviewed and continue the district forums. You're saying we're going to hold it next week. Let's see if that comes through. It can't be certain at this stage. In this format, as they're currently delivered, until it is resolved by council.
Yeah, so it continues on. Nothing changes until, until afterwards.
So if councillor Harrell is willing to accept that into the.
Well, it didn't technically say we moved anything, but if you're, just keep it deferred. If you're going to remove your foreshadow, we'll adopt the motion.
Put the motion, Mr.
All right, all those in favour? Against, declare unanimous. Great. Hammondville, move councillor, uh, McNair, second and councillor Moon. Um, draft Hammondville precinct, one forty-one, tab seven, one forty-two. Councillor Green?
Uh, I was going to ask for it to be deferred only because I understand there's a history, um, as a first-time, uh, first-term councillor, I'm not really across the whole history of it all. And so I would like to suggest it be deferred and a, a broader conversation occur, please.
Councillor, can I suggest that I'm happy to take offline and meet with you at any time? It's really imperative we start this consultation process. If I can also indicate, I've already met with the Sporties Club even today to discuss quite a bit of this. We want to meet again in a couple of weeks' time. They're a very big part of the consultation process. All of the clubs that are associated, sporting clubs are a very big part. We really need to start the consultation process. That's what this is all about. And I'm happy to meet with any councillor to, as part of that consultation process.
I understand that. Um, and I guess my, why I'm conflicted, uh, is part, is a major reason is the correspondence that all councillors received from, from Sporties in the last several weeks.
Correct.
Um, so I'm concerned that that in some way has acted as a trigger to, um, push this along a bit further or quicker. Well, that's, that's part of why I'm asking.
And I know, it's fair enough.
Because I think there are lots of questions that I've got.
Sorry, councillor, I didn't mean.
No, 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 that's fine.
If I, I can assure you, I met with them today. I met with H W L, there was about eight of them. I met with myself and a number of my staff. We had a fantastic meeting and I'm sure they'll tell you exactly that. A very promising meeting. Um, there is a huge amount that we can do together. Uh, we're all on the same page about creating synergies between us. They're actually now very excited to move forward with us during this consultation. They've come up with some fantastic, uh, suggestions. So I can assure you, if you pick up the phone and call them tomorrow, they will tell you exactly what I am telling you. And, uh, we have quite a bit of work to do with them. We can't do this without them. That is my strong recommendation. They can't do it without us. We need to be working in partnership with them and all the sporting groups to bring the very best. So put simply, we've agreed, what's best for their members, their members are our residents. What's best for their members is best for our residents. That's the position we left it at.
Thank you. I understand, um, and I appreciate the offer of the, uh, one on a, a personal briefing. Um, but where I'm at at the moment, I, I can't support this. I'll be voting against.
Okay, great. So you're, you're moving a defer, you still want to move for a deferral or just you're going to?
The, a majority, uh, from what I'm hearing, uh, would prefer to, uh, vote, if it goes to a vote, I can't vote for it because I don't feel fully informed. And I have concerns over the last lot of correspondence that we received, which I thought part of that was way out of line. Um, so I'm, I'm not comfortable.
No worries. Look, I'm, in speaking for the motion and acknowledging what councillor Green said, you know, um, if I was Sporties and I was waiting ten years to come into an agreement with council, I'd be extremely frustrated. Um, and it's, it's definitely not, uh, I, I, I think they've been dealt badly with council. I think we could have been doing some, we could be doing things better. Um, I think we need to start because one, we need to officially start talking to people. Grab all the feedback because what's potentially in that mass plan could be irrelevant if, if it doesn't meet the community needs, number one. Um, and obviously, number two, part of that is Sporties, as the CEO, uh, said. But we need to, we need to hear what the community wants because this is their facility and we're just enabling the process. And I think the quicker we move this on, we start talking, it's been, since the, since the motion that was moved in the first council meeting, it was February last year, so we're, we're on fourteen, fifteen, sixteen months.
Yep, councillor Moon?
Just, just confirming that, this is only basically going out to community consultation. We, we're not making a decision on anything right now. We're just going to find out what the community want and how they'd like this to be designed and then we're going to go to design. So realistically, we're, we're only looking at what the community wants at the end of the day. We're not making a decision on behalf of anybody, are we? Is that correct?
Yep, correct.
Would you please put the motion?
Sorry, councillor Rhodes, just one second, councillor Rhodes?
I think that councillor Moon has, uh, said exactly what I was going to say. That, um, I think councillor Green's concerns will be addressed. This is just going out on public exhibition and it gives the council the opportunity to see what the constituents think about that. There is still ample time for you to find out all about this, it's past history. And, uh, therefore I don't recommend that you defer it. But you will be educated on it as it passes through. That's what I was going to say.
Lovely, all right. I'll move that the motion be put. Uh, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, I declare the motion carried. Division, division has been called, all those in favour, please stand. Against? Councillor Carnaby, are you for or against?
Carnaby, against.
Thank you.
I think.
Okay, great. Um, we'll have a very, uh, short, uh, six-minute recess. Uh, we'll be back at three forty. We'll now move on to corp zero one, the investment report.
Move the recommendation.
Page one sixty-five, tab eight, one sixty-six, move. Deputy mayor, second councillor Harrell, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Against, I declare it carried. Uh, corp zero two.
I have a motion, Mr Mayor.
One seventy-five, tab nine, Pedro with councillor McNair, what is your motion?
Um, uh, the motion is that council, number one, notes the associated costs and adopts a policy to provide free parking from A, Friday, six P M until Monday, one A M, and B, all day on public holidays.
Yep.
And point two maintains the existing fee structure containing council's fees and charges policy for weekend and monthly pass holders.
I second that motion.
Seconded, councillor Rhodes. Uh, councillor Hagerty? Got your hand up?
Yeah, I'm just trying to, the screen's moving around rather quickly. Um, can we have a point three, uh, with the mover and seconders indulgence? Uh, that council investigate, uh, the potential for surge pricing? And I can explain what that is.
Um, are the mover and second happy with that?
Can we hear the explanation what it is? I've got no idea.
Yeah, so, so during, during the last term of council, we were able to get some of those digital displays which you've seen around the place which tell you where, you know, where parking is. Now, the idea, the eventual idea with that is you put more of them around the place uh, and you have essentially all the, all the parking spots are networked. And what happens is when there's plenty of parking spots that are free and demand is down, uh, the price comes down which encourages people to park. When, when the parking on the street is taken, the price goes up. So essentially the price goes up and down based on parameters you set, based on, you know, how much the parking is being used or isn't being used. And you can incorporate these kinds of things within it, but rather than just having a blanket, um, policy, you know, it's free between these times, uh, it's a bit more dynamic. And it's something that, that, um, other cities have introduced around the world. And essentially you're using the market, uh, to encourage or discourage parking in certain parts of, of the CBD.
Mr Mayor?
What I'm asking for is a, a report to go off, see how much it would cost, how it would work, um, pros and cons.
Yeah, I don't see an issue with the report if councillors are happy with that.
Can I ask, yeah, that we, we get an, so what I'm moving is specifically in relation to the Warren Service Way. And I would like a report to come back to council investigating surge parking across the LGA as a separate issue. But I'm happy to incorporate it into this motion. Are you happy with that?
Um, can we just look at that first motion and make sure that you have referred it to the Warren Car Park? Notes the associated costs and adopts?
Uh, the, the heading of the, um, uh, the, uh, item is Warren Service Way Car Park. So it refers to the Warren Service Way. Um, in point three, we can investigate surge pricing across all council car parks.
I, I'm just concerned, I can't see Warren Car Park.
The title of the, uh, item number is corp oh two, Warren Service Way Car Park.
Yeah, do you want to maybe just put that in the motion?
In the motion.
Warren Service Way?
I think, I, I don't mind, it's repetitive, but it covers both bases.
That's what you want?
Yep.
Councillor Caliander?
Uh, yes, thank you, Matt. Um, this is more of a question. Um, we previously had sort of sensors, um, that were, uh, that were kind of located on street parking, which would, um, help to identify on average, you know, how long, uh, cars were parking, uh, and, and, you know, just some of those, that granular detail. Um, I recently noticed that those sensors are no longer around, especially in the CBD. Can I get an explanation as to what's happened to them?
Yep, I'll refer to the CEO, to the, and his relevant staff.
Yes, um, I'll refer it to the acting director, Julie Scott.
Thank you. Through the CEO, thank you for the question, councillor. Uh, just to understand the, the context of that, we received twelve-month initial pilot funding for those sensors. Uh, that funding actually ran out and so we need to make a decision at some point through the budget process as to whether or not we need to go forward with that again.
Okay, look forward to having a briefing about that and a discussion about that soon. Councillor Caliander?
In, in that case, um, can I suggest that we include, um, in, include the sensors into the, um, um, like into the, the scoping for how we look at parking? Because I believe that, you know, some of the data that was obtained from those sensors could also, uh, look, could also feed into the, the, the ideas around surge pricing and that sort of thing. Because without, without the sensors, you wouldn't really know where people are parking, you know, how long they're parking for, some of that, some of that data which will then kind of feed into, um, whether or not surge pricing is practical.
Could we do that as another motion at another time, councillor, willing to support it? But this was specific about the, uh, the Warren Service Way Car Park?
Yeah, it's a good point. It's actually a bit, if you want to go on to the sensors, I think that's a bit.
We'll, we'll investigate, uh, sorry, incorporating the sensors into the scope of the report to come back to council, not kind of, not, you know, physically.
Yeah, that's fine. Mover and second happy with that?
Yes, just incorporate it in, that's fine.
Yep, great. All right. That being said, I'll put the motion, all those in favour? Against, declare unanimous. Next item is the Smart Bin Trial, Operation Zero One, page one oh eight, tab ten, what can I mention?
Happy to accept the report.
Yeah, move councillor McNair, second and councillor Moon, in discussion. Put the motion, all those in favour? Against, declare it carried. Um, Operation Zero Two, integrated pest management policy, one eighty-four, tab eleven.
Just a clarification from council, please.
Yeah, sorry, move councillor Green, seconded, Deputy Mayor.
Um, look, I'm not a weed expert, but I know that the E A C, uh, committee meeting, uh, had questions about the weeds and not all weeds had been included in the original report. Um, have the, have those weeds that were missing from the original report been included now in this report?
Uh, the acting director of operations, Terry Miller.
Uh, through the CEO, I'd like to refer to Karen Visman. She's the coordinator of environment management.
Thank you. Through the CEO, um, yeah, in response to your question, councillor Rhodes, we did increase the number of priority weeds in response to the E A C feedback.
Excellent. As long as that's been addressed, I have no problem with it.
Wonderful. Thank you. And I just want to, I just want to thank the staff for, um, helping the community in Cecil Hills with the, um, ibis birds. I've learnt so much about ibis birds and, and I think we have our licence to come and deal with their, um, the challenges that exist there. So thank you for the staff putting that on board.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, I'll, if there's no further discussion, I'll put the motion, all those in favour? Against, declare it unanimous. Next item, okay, committee reports. So committee zero one, the traffic committee being held, uh, seventeenth of May. Moved councillor Harrell, second and councillor Green, any discussion? Put the motion, all those in favour? Against, I declare it carried. Now, we'll move, we'll, we'll get to the addendum. I know it's showing addendum next, but we'll now go to noms for the citizenship ceremonies. Um, councillor Hagerty, you have a nom, page one ninety-five, tab thirteen.
Pretty straightforward. Um, I've had the pleasure of attending a couple of, uh, citizenship ceremonies in different councils and, um, they, they do them differently and this is always something. something we can improve, I don't suggest we go all the way that Campbelltown does, they have a team of bagpipers who play the national anthem, and the mayor parades in behind them with all the dignitary, that I think we need to go to that extent, but I, I did pick a couple of the better ideas from those as a, as a suggestion here to improve citizenship ceremonies.
Do you have a second, councillor? Councillor Caliander? I'm just concerned that the, on your point two councillor, so point two, we already, we adhere to the citizenship code already, you know what I mean, it's, so I think we're already doing that, you're kind of saying that we don't do that, and if you look at...
No, what I'm, what I'm suggesting is that in, 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 in doing part one, if we change anything, we just make sure that we adhere to the code, that, you know, anything we do add or change is, is adheres to the code.
Yeah, sorry, I'm having some, councillor McNaul?
No, I'm just, I, I appreciate the explanation of that point, but it did worry me to read that, because I think it could be interpreted that we're not following the code, and I wouldn't mind seeing that either deleted or somehow incorporated to reflect that if we change things, we still must adhere to the code, not that we don't adhere to the code.
Yeah, I personally would prefer to have something that congratulates staff for their significant work and efforts in, you know, running citizenship ceremonies, I know they put a lot of work and effort into it, you know, the councils who do attend, they already participate, I know councillor Rhodes and Green, and, you know, councillor Moon and McNaul, we spend the whole, and we basically spend Saturdays pretty much the whole day there from nine thirty in the morning till two o'clock, I think we end up leaving, I know councillor Kenny, you're the last one, you spoke, I think, at the last one or the one before, my apologies, I think now with, we can lock in a bit of a roster system, that we can make sure that, as per the code, that everyone gets a chance to speak, so we, we try to do them so they don't last too long, we try to get kids out of there, I think we're very, very innovative getting kids out of there as quickly as possible, we put Peppa Pig on the screen to kind of occupy them for the hour and hour and a bit, so I think it's been, it's gone through a lot of reforms, so I think we, I think if anything, councillor Hagerty, it'd be good that we, we actually congratulated the staff for, for their work and effort into it, and we would love, welcome any other feedback to actually make it better and make it, I think make it more special, doing it on a Saturday, I can tell you one thing, that's not necessarily convenient for myself or the councillors, but it's convenient for the families, they don't have to take time off work, they don't have to take off, time off school, so we're really going out of our, going out of our way, but we're, our priority is a day, get to enjoy this day as much as humanly possible within it. So I guess councillor McNaul's point, it kind of reads like we're not doing a nice job and we're not adhering to the code.
Couldn't we just maybe add two words, that any changes, you know, that, you know, are compliant with the Australian Citizenship Code, just, you know, just any changes so that.
Yeah, 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 if we can, potentially, if the mover and second are happy then, it's also been advised, if we maybe, I'd say, if we continue to, if we can add that into the beginning of that, I think that would be a, sends another, a positive statement as well. Would you be happy with that councillor Hagerty?
Yep, I think councillor Green's addition there, yeah, clears that up, that any changes are compliant with the Australian, yeah, happy with that.
Yeah, and you're happy with saying that council continues to.
Yes, sir.
I think it was that any changes continue to be compliant with the Australian Citizenship Code.
Yeah, and I guess when you say develop a procedure, like what are you, are you looking at a document now?
You know, well, I don't want to go, if, if we don't need to do a, a policy, we don't need to do a policy, but, you know, the appropriate level of document, document, that says, you know, that you want to do a roster, whether dignitaries that turn up will be able to partake in these events, that kind of thing, so, yeah.
Yeah, so bear in mind, so that, that, that whole, which you've quoted in your, in your, your motion there, that, that document is the, the procedures, I guess, you know what I mean? Yeah, yeah, we'll do that, so if you, yeah, if, well, we got to put the roster, so that, just so you know, the challenge for us, we just need to know who's going to be there for, and how long they're going to be there for, you know what I mean, some people do a speech and leave, some stay, so if we know, then we can allocate resources, well, roles accordingly.
Mr Mayor, can we just check number one, all councillors and MPs in attendance? Because we, we can't do everybody, because we've got this problem about time at the ceremony.
Invited to, are invited to participate, so it could just be the, they don't have to, but, you know, take turns giving out gifts, I'm not suggesting everyone get up and speak, but Campbelltown, Camden Council seem to be able to make it work, so perhaps staff can reach out to them and, and get some suggestions.
I don't know, we put through two hundred, two thirty, every, two seventy, and the, the biggest problem that we've got at those ceremonies is being able to get the people through as quickly as possible, you've got young children there, and they become a little bit tired, so it, it wouldn't be possible for, at every meeting, that all, or all councillors can, because we just help to try and get them through, but the MPs in attendance, according to the roster, are invited to participate.
Well, if we put the words "we're practical", I think that's probably, that does it.
As long as you cover it, because we can't, we, I know it's physically impossible for us to do that.
Yeah, and I'll tell you what, the more councillors that come, the more saves, it saves us money, because they're actually doing, the councillors who are there are actually doing work and helping out, I think we only, we only have a few staff that are there.
So if you add the words "we're practical" after in attendance and before are invited, so for councillor MP in attendance, comma, "we're practical", comma, "are invited to participate", that covers, I think, everybody.
Yep, are you happy with that councillor Hagerty?
Hmm.
Yep, great, and happy to go and have a look one day if you're heading out to one of the other citizenship ceremonies, happy to come and join you to see how they, how they work, and see if we can pick up anything like that, anything from there.
Yeah, I suggest you come to one of the Campbelltown ones, where they got the bagpipe, the, the team of bagpipers, it's, it's, it's something.
That's good, well, I know in Fairfield.
I'm attending my, I'm attending my first Fairfield ceremony next week, so you're, I'm more than well, more than happy to come back and report how it is.
Yeah, well, I was told they don't even take individual pictures with everyone, you know, we just, just do a big selfie, which, anyway.
Oh, that sounds fun.
All right, yes, all those in favour, I put the motion, like declare it unanimous, all right. Okay, now we'll go to the addendum booklet, and there are two items in the addendum booklet. Committee 02, the minutes of the governance committee meeting, page 331 of addendum book four.
Move that way.
Move deputy mayor, seconded, councillor, councillor Hall, councillor Hagerty, question?
Just in terms of procedure, I think this is now the third month in a row where the minutes of this meeting have been added late in the piece, I also know that some of the stuff that comes to this committee is quite important, and probably deserves its own item in the agenda, so either we look at having, changing the timing of these meetings, or simply what happens in the, in the June meeting covers, you know, carries over to July, and, and vice versa, and, you know, so on, I'm just concerned that in, in terms of good governance, that we're, we're almost sort of rushing through some of the stuff that gets covered here, and it's, it's not given appropriate airtime within the minutes, so either we look at the timing of this meeting, or, or it carries over to the July meeting. I get that from time to time, because of, you know, deadlines, thirty June, whatever, sometimes we're going to have to put additional, you know, things up urgently, but I think this is the third month in a row that this has happened, so I'd just like to give consideration to perhaps changing the way that the, the minutes of this meeting are incorporated into the wider agenda.
Yeah, so look, ha- happy to look into that, because at the moment, it's still, it's, I think the committee's still finding it's sort of fit, and the best way to run it, so, you know, if you want to maybe email the CEO, you know, myself, that feedback, so we can, we can, we can, we can work it all out.
Because we're also looking at the starting.
Yeah, we're looking, there's a, there's a whole bunch of things that are being looked at, as, and I think that was part of the resolution anyway, we, we look at it originally, but thank you for your feedback. Any other further discussion? Put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare it unanimous. Next item is Corp 03, the budget, I'm happy to move that way, which is, second and deputy mayor, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare it carried. Okay, now we move into the confidential booklet.
Yeah, Mr Mayor, can I move that, all the confidential items to be moved as a whole, unless if there is anyone has.
I'd just like to pull out the youth council, I'd like to pull out the youth council, Confo five separately, please.
Okay, yeah, move it as a whole without this item.
Yep, is there a second for that? Second councillor Hall, all right, anyone, anyone have any objections? So we're dealing with Conf 1, 2, 3, 4 in one hit? Yep, all those in favour, or if any, against, declare it unanimous. We're now Conf 05, councillor McNaul?
I just had a question and comment, you know, thank you very much for the opportunity to participate in these, this process for the youth council, a really important part of our, our representation. If I can just ask, and I know it says, it may seem like a redundant question, we talk about changing the policy for the youth council to meet bi-monthly, and I'm aware that there are two definitions of bi-monthly, and I just would like it clarified that we mean every two months and not twice a month, which, you know, I know that that's what we mean, but maybe we just spell it out once in that policy?
Yeah, the usual acceptance of the definition, bi-monthly is every two months.
I know, but I go.
I'm happy to, in brackets, be two months.
Thank you.
Biannually is the good one, biannually.
Yeah, biannually means twice a year.
Happy to second that.
Or every two years.
Not only speak English, I mean, what's going on?
It's every two years.
All right, move councillor Rhodes, second and councillor McNaul, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare it carried. Thank you everyone, I now declare the meeting officially closed. Thank you.